Tonight, that was a quick meeting. Good evening. Tonight is April 7th, 2016. Tonight we have two items on the agenda for the council as a whole meeting. The agenda will consist of the following. Twenty sixteen ordinance that Chapter 181, Section 3561 of the Code of the City of Fitchburg, zoning special permit for nonconforming structures abandoned or not used for more than two years, as most recently amended, be further amended by striking the following words, City Council, and by inserting the word Board of Appeals. Counselors, this was sent through two readings and was referred to Council as a whole prior to its final reading. Counselor Bean.
I move that it be moved to its third and final reading. Admitted.
This is just a council as a whole meeting, isn't it?
Yeah, by just moving, I make a recommendation. You need a, you need a motion in order to ask for anything?
Absolutely. We do, if that's correct.
Okay, I'm sorry, Counselor Joseph had me confused. I'm making a motion that we approve it as is.
Second. I have a motion in second to approve 2016 to send to the full council towards its third and final reading. Counselor Dean Natale speaking to the motion.
Maybe I missed something, but, so that's, that's it.
It'll still go for its third and final reading.
No, but I, it sounds, I'm getting the impression that this is, this is not going to be really a discussed matter. This is, everybody's kind of, I guess I'm speaking on the motion. Couple of, a few months ago, I was pounding the table about getting this out of our jurisdiction. And the reason for that was, this is my ninth year, and I could probably safely say that we've had more special permit hearings before us in the last few months than we've had in eight years I've been on this council. And ninety percent of those hearings we've had, we went in blind with these hearings. We didn't have any information, we didn't have any feedback from any regulatory agencies. We were basically working off these permit requests on the fly. So I started hemming and hawing about why we're wasting our time, because I obviously am not a subject matter expert, and especially when I'm not given information, I certainly am not, but most of the things we do here, we require information input from other agencies that are experts. There were two instances in the recent past, the LeMay property on Myrtle Ave and the Park Street property that we dealt with last week. Those hearings went rather smoothly and efficiently because we had ahead of time recommendations of conditions we should set, and we could use that as a foundation or a basis to make our decisions. Whereas in the past, we never had any such information. So my reason for supporting this originally was, if we're not going to be given the information, and we're going to spend two hours talking about something and going around in circles when we don't really know what we're doing, then it shouldn't be with us. But I think the last two hearings have proven that if we are given the adequate information, we can make decisions, and I just, I guess I'm kind of backtracking on my earlier opinion of having this go to ZBA. My concern with it going to ZBA also is, the ZBA, I think they'll give a lot harder time to people getting things through, and then I have a concern if the ZBA takes us on, what if in the event the permits are denied? Because it is the city's problem if these properties stay vacant and unused. And secondly, the ZBA, as far as I'm understanding, their meetings are already four or five hours long. This is just going to further prolong these meetings. I don't even know how they get through their regular agenda. You know, the chairman of the ZBA told me that these meetings can go well past 10:30, 11 o'clock. So I guess my point, everybody, is, I was in favor of this originally, but I, the reason why I was in favor of it was because I wasn't getting anything out of this process. Permit submitted, we look at nothing, and we've got the gentlemen and the ladies sitting in front of us, and we're all fighting about what we should do, when no, none of us have a clue what to do, because no one from the inside city government has told us what they believe should be done. And in two recent instances, they have, and it went nicely. So if that happened previously, I wouldn't be yelling and screaming for this to go through the ZBA. So I guess in my opinion, the way I see this playing out is, if we don't get the information ahead of time, we should just simply continue the hearing, not spend two hours talking about it, and then continue the hearing. Continue the hearing and say, until we get information from the ICE committee or the Building Department or the Fire Department, we're not even going to look at this. Okay? And I would assume that the ZBA would need that information as well. I would like to think the ZBA is not going to do whatever they want, not take input from the regulatory agencies. So I guess I'm okay either way, but I support it more staying with us, given the last two instances of how it can work and how it should work. My question before I stop speaking is, anybody here know why, maybe Mr. Solicitor, anybody here before me, why this is before, why this is in the law that says we have to do this? Was there a reason why the council was responsible for this and not a zoning board?
I'm not aware of what the rationale was that had to go to City Council. The statute permits, it says may, you may make regulations about properties that are grandfathered and not used for two years, or properties that have been abandoned. But it doesn't say it has to go to City Council at the statutory level. That was a decision, I think, the city made at the time.
Okay, so my only concern then, if it goes to ZBA, is what happens, there are extenuating circumstances, at least from my vantage point of leaving a property vacant, but what happens in the instance where the ZBA frequently denies these requests and these properties sit and look like a hellhole? What happens? I mean, that's how I look at it with our body, is, you know, eventually it's going to be our problem. I am afraid that there are going to be properties we're going to seize, and then we're going to have to spend tens of thousands of dollars to knock down. It's very hard for me not to approve a special permit, given the conditions we're given, just because I don't want to approve it, because the alternative is not beneficial to anybody. So given what we've seen the last two hearings, I think it can work if it stayed here, but I leave it up for the rest of you. Thank you.
Counselor Bean.
Thank you. I somewhat like Counselor Dean Natale, have changed my opinion. I was originally for keeping it in the City Council, but not because of the last two hearings, but the hearings prior to that, we had a few of them come in here where we had to postpone and postpone, because we didn't have the information, we weren't getting the information we needed. So my thought was, why not go to the ZBA? Those folks are trained, educated, they deal with this on an ongoing basis, and it wouldn't be politicized by going to the ZBA. What we're talking about are abandoned buildings, that have been abandoned for two years, you know, two years or more in some of these neighborhoods. And most of these places are in very dense neighborhoods, you know, the College Neighborhood, Claygon, and areas like that. So in those type of neighborhoods, right now, it's very limited parking, very limited space. So I think that we need to have some controls, and this would be one of them, in order for the ZBA to be able to approve somebody using that two-family or one-family or three-family, for whatever purpose, be able to put restrictions on it. And I guess parking is probably the biggest thing. You don't want to be a neighbor next to a house that doesn't have parking, and have those people parking in front of your house. I just think it's a way to kind of move things forward, have the ZBA do it, and keep it less politicized. So I would move to keep it, to move it to the ZBA.
Counselor Beazell.
Thank you. I think when I'm looking at this, it really doesn't matter one way or the other, because if we're going to take recommendations from the zoning board or from other committees, and we're just approving what they've recommended, it's really a double step. I think the most important thing is, there's a couple important things when, hopefully in our city, whenever we're looking at buildings, we're making sure that we're doing the right thing with them, and not just saying, we just want to fill buildings. And secondly, I think I've said it a couple times this year, probably the most important thing that we do as a City Council is appoint people to boards and commissions. We need to feel secure that when we're giving authority to the boards and commissions, that we're trusting them to do the right thing. And I know that a lot of times we have people that come before us, and we appoint them knowing that they're going to do the best for the city. So whether it stays there, and it comes to us with their recommendation, and we only approve it with their recommendation, to me, it really doesn't matter, as long as we're doing the right things with these buildings. So thank you.
Counselor Boishman.
I kind of agree with Counselor Bean. I'd like to see it go back to the ZBA. But I want to say the reasons why. I think as a body here, we're more concerned about votes than we are about the city of Fitchburg. That's how I feel. And we're afraid to make the tough calls and the tough decisions. Now, we made more than one mistake prior. We made 64 Nashville Street a mistake, because we felt sorry for the people that were here, because they were minorities, and they didn't have a lot of money. So we didn't want to put any kind of restrictions. Seventy-six, seventy-eight Nashville Street should have been a two-family, not a three. Well, the guy was a contractor, so we said, but the area is congested, unbelievable congested. And we should have said no on that one, and we should have said, bring it back to a two-family, but we did not do that. And now you still got a congested area, and I believe that's in your mind, Amy, Green, see? And you're trying to do, if the zoning board doesn't want to give a special permit, and they give us the reasons why, I have no problem with it. And I have no problem going to the mayor and say, tear the stupid thing down, the area is congested, you don't have any room, and you can't live. You can't breathe, and this is what brings end problems. And they don't want to fix up their houses, and the whole purpose is to have people fix up their houses. So when people drive through the city, as Counselor Donnelly told me, you've got a big festival coming up from Fitchburg State University, graduation, you're going to have 5,000 people coming in, looking at wad five. If they see dilapidated buildings, what do they say when they go home? Christ, I'm not going to Fitchburg and live. Look at the, look at the hole they're in. That's why, give it to the zoning board, let them make the tough decisions to work. We don't want to make tough decisions. Thank you.
Counselor Dean Natale.
With all due respect, I have never voted for a special permit, because I was afraid that it was going to impact me at the ballot box. Okay? I've said a lot of things on this council for eight years, and it hasn't hurt me at the ballot box. And quite honestly, I've never had a resident contact me and say, you know what, counselor, you lost my vote, because you voted for that permit yesterday. Anyway, we've made mistakes. The ZBA will make mistakes. We've also had some good stories. I'm sick and tired of the negativity. Last week was a prime example, where this gentleman wanted to have a two-family, and because we listened to the residents, it was a publicized, videotaped meeting, where residents spoke to us about why they didn't want it to be a two-family, and we had a litany of conditions from the Board of Building Department. We made it a single family, not a two-family, and the residents were very happy with that. Didn't do it for votes, we did it because it was common sense. Not going to defend my previous actions on any vote I might have taken that might have been a mistake. Okay? I could make a lot of cases here, votes that we've taken, that was a big mistake. I'm not necessarily against it going to ZBA, I'm just saying that the reason why I wanted it to go to ZBA originally is because we went into these meetings blind. We had nothing to go on. And you're absolutely right, there were decisions we've made in the past that we shouldn't have made, because we didn't do our homework, not so much we didn't do it, we didn't continue the hearing and ask for the stuff. That's changed in the recent past. So I'm just saying that I could see a case for it to be made to stay here, but I'm not necessarily opposed to going to ZPA, I was just making that point. But I just want the people to understand, from my standpoint, that I'm not doing this for or against, because I'm afraid how it'll impact me vote-wise. Thank you.
Counselor Joseph.
Is this the only type of special permit that we get as a City Council? Isn't there other types of special permit requests that have to come before the City Council? So can I get maybe a little bit of a description of other special permits that we've heard?
The only, sorry, Mike O'Hara from the planning forum. The only ones that I remember is...
Mr. O'Hara, if you wouldn't mind addressing the center table.
It was commercial recreation or amusement. Remember the Coco Keys, and then later the water, the Great Wolf came before. There are a couple of others.
Vehicles.
I don't think so. Well, that's a different licensing thing, but there, you know, maybe four or five, at the most.
Right, so I think, my point is, I think we're focusing on one type of special permit request that we have to deal with, that might be a little painful for us, but I think that there are other special permit things that we have responsibility for, that we should be looking at the whole picture, and not just what's come before us for buildings that are non, that have been abandoned for two years.
One question was asked earlier, how did this, how did the City Council get this in the first place? And I think Mr. Donnelly and myself were the only ones still around when the ordinance was redone, with Mark Bobrowski in 99, I think, and 2000, and I've been trying to think how it was arrived at. I mean, the special permit authority can be either the City Council, or a Board of Appeals, or a Planning Board, you know, only certain things, and I can't remember why the City Council was chosen to get this particular one. But there are a couple of other things. If you recall, the origin of this petition, I believe, was a Planning Board, because they saw that there was the issue with, I forget the street address, but it was on Prospect Street, and a big rigmarole about that, so it suggested, well, let's make those nonconforming single or two-family structures, you know, just do it by right, or send it to the Board of Appeals, because the land use boards are more used to dealing with that kind of issue. I'd suggested to the Planning Board, why don't you guys do it, actually, but they felt it was more like an appeal situation that the Board of Appeals deals with on a monthly basis, as they are right now.
Thank you, Mr. O'Hara. Counselor Joseph, you still?
I just want to clarify that this wasn't the only thing that we have special permits for.
Counselor Donnelly.
I brought a copy of the new zoning that Mike just mentioned, that was approved in 2000, and I brought a copy of the old zoning, which I believe started in 1987. The number of things that could have gone to the council in the old zoning, there were thirty-six. And during the Vision 2021, the zoning was written, because of, sometimes it gets to be a political football, it gets bounced around, it was recommended that we cut it down. And right now, there are twelve, twelve different circumstances in the current zoning. Now, I believe that it belongs in zoning, because it's, you really need the book, you got to study the book, know what's, what the zoning is, what's allowed, what's not allowed, what could be allowed, what might be in the best interest of the city and, or the neighborhood. I don't see in the zoning, and maybe one of the gentlemen here can, I don't see where it says on that state law when it's two years. It's in statute, but I don't see it addressed in our zoning book. I, to USA...
I think it's in there.
Is it in this, or is it just under the statute?
It's not in this typical special permit area. It's in a different area.
Okay. But it's just, I think the zoning board specializes in it, and I think that's what they do on a monthly basis, and they do it all the time. Now, if we were in a smaller town, a lot of the selectmen, they may be on the zoning board, they may be on the, also on the zoning board, they could be on a water commission, they're going to be on a wastewater commission, because there aren't that many people volunteering for those things. But you get to be the size of the city, and, as stated, your eight years, there are hardly any of these. But because there's so many empty buildings now, and now the market's beginning to come back, there's more interest, and I think you've only seen the tip of the iceberg, as far as number of hearings that we're going to have. I don't think, some of them aren't too complicated, but some could be very complicated. I think one of the best examples of the council not approving one was on Chestnut Street. It was a five-unit building that was denied, it doesn't have one parking spot, and it's just as congested as Park Street is. And it was denied, there's a for sale sign on it now. But I think that every piece of property, because of zoning, everything has a right to do something with the land, it's not necessarily what the applicant wants. And some things are grandfathered, and if it's empty for two years, you lose that grandfathered right. But I don't see it as the specialty of the council. My opinion would be to send it to the zoning board, where that's what they specialize in, and let the council do what it specializes in. Thank you.
Agree with Counselor Donnelly in that, I think counselors, by their very nature, have to be generalists. We have to know a little bit about everything, we have to learn to kind of take direction and understand from both department heads and our boards and commissions, where their areas of expertise are. You know, I can, I can walk down a street and tell you if something looks congested or not, but I still don't know, you know, what the best recommendations are on square footage for necessary parking spaces. I couldn't tell you the necessary setbacks for each, each specific area, for certain, certain zoned areas. I couldn't tell you whether a building is architecturally redeemable, according to its architecture or other features, as the code asks us to analyze. I think that's where we need to rely on specialists. I think the zoning Board of Appeals, by its very nature, has to deal with a multitude of different special permits and other matters that require their, their technical expertise, and require them to know the building code and zoning better than any other body in this city, and work in lockstep with both folks like our building commissioner, and Mr. O'Hara in planning. So I think, sure, we need to make sure that they're properly trained, that they have all the professional development opportunities that they need to exercise their, their expertise, and I think we also need to make sure that we give them correct direction from both the council and the mayor. To Counselor Dean Natale's point of, you know, if we pass something or don't pass something, if we, if we leave more vacant properties, what will next become of them? So I think we need to be clear in what comes next. And I think that problem remains, whether the council's making a decision or the zoning board, but ultimately, hopefully through the mayor's action and allocation of funds to demolition accounts, and the council's support of further funds for demolition, hopefully that gives some direction and guidance to the zoning board on, on where we'd like to see things. So ultimately, I think we restore some additional objectivity to the process, while I agree with Counselor Dean Natale, that we, I think we've, we've done well over the previous two decisions. I think, you know, we're still not experts. I could still spend, you know, another hundred hours better knowing building code, but at the end of the day, I can't live and breathe that singular document. You know, we have any number of matters that come before us on a week-to-week or month-to-month basis. Quite frankly, I don't think I have the time to become an expert in building code, and if I were to become that, I think I'd be doing so neglecting other responsibilities. Thank you.
Move questions, Mr. President.
I have a motion in second to approve 2016 and send to its third and final reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Twenty sixteen passes. Twenty-one, twenty sixteen ordinance, that Chapter 181, Section 356 of the Code of the City of Fitchburg, zoning abandonment or non-use, as most recently amended, be further amended by adding this section shall not apply to the reuse of a lawfully existing nonconforming single or two-family structure where the principal use is permitted by right in the specified district under 181-313, and provided that no modification of the use or structure is accomplished unless authorized under the provisions of 181-35.
Mr. President.
Counselor Bean.
I'd move to give it leave to withdraw.
I have a motion in second to give twenty-one sixteen.
Speaking on the motion.
Leave to withdraw. Counselor Bean speaking to the motion.
Today I had an opportunity to speak with the building commissioner about this ordinance change that we have here now. I think what we just, what we just did prior to this about is, it somewhat affects what the city solicitor provided us tonight. City Solicitor, we just got this, and I haven't read it completely, but he refers to the City Council being the special permit provider, which will not be the case, it will now be the zoning board of appeals. My concern about why I wanted to give this one leave to withdraw, is because we're talking about abandoned buildings, am I correct? Vacant buildings that have been vacant for two years that are single or two families. They may exist currently, but they're nonconforming, which means that, give you an example, there could be a house on Mechanic Street, a single-family home. Today, it, it works. If that was vacant for two years, you'd have to go back to the zoning board to get approval to use it as a single-family home, because it doesn't meet the minimum setbacks, it, you know, may not meet parking requirements of today. Same thing with the two-family. I mean, every two-family that's been abandoned for two years, we're not talking about houses that are currently, you know, occupied in that, we're talking abandonment for two years. We know what happens to property when they've been abandoned, they become derelict, usually it's eyesore. So my concern is that, you know, we need to make sure that we still have an opportunity to make some conditions on those properties. If we just allow this by right, we'd have no opportunity to make conditions, whether it be parking, or other, other things that we can require. So I believe that it should be part of the process, now that we have the ZBA involved. And that was why I provide, that's why I suggested we give it leave to withdraw.
Speaking to the motion, Counselor Joseph.
I guess the only thing that bothers me about this whole process is, we're singling out a home that has a zoning variance that was determined maybe thirty years ago, or twenty years ago, based on our zoning laws. Okay? If somebody buys an abandoned home that fits into the zoning things, and it doesn't have to have any kind, that didn't have any deformities, that house can be falling apart, roof collapsing, foundation cracked, the whole bit, but because that sits on a conforming lot, that house can be rehabbed without anybody saying, yeah, you have my permission to rehab. Okay? But if you have one that doesn't have the proper setback, then you say, oh, guess what, you don't have the proper setback, even though this house is probably built in 1977, you know, has a good roof, has siding, has everything, but you have to put that person through another hoop to send them to the zoning board in order for them to be able to rehab that house. These houses could be side by side, one could be falling, one could be dilapidated completely, and they don't have to get anything from the zoning board of appeals. And the one right next to it, because it's been abandoned for two years, but it has an improper setback, has to jump through hoops in order to pass this process. So I guess I don't understand why we feel that that person, just because they bought a house on a lot that doesn't have the same amount of frontage as this one, needs to jump through any different hoop than the person that bought one on a conforming lot that could be a piece of crap. So I guess I don't understand why we, why we're singling out these houses, when we, just say, every house in the city that's been abandoned for two years has to go to the zoning board of appeals in order to be rehabbed, not if it had any non-conformities or anything. If it's been abandoned for two years, send it through the same process, or take these houses and send it through the same process as the ones that have a conform, that do conform. It's got to be one way or the other. You can't single out the people that are on a nonconforming lot versus the ones that are on a conforming lot. If you do, you have to make them equal. And I think that we would be brought to court if we don't make them equal, because we're making somebody do something that there's no reason for them to do if they were on a conforming lot.
Counselor Bean.
It's pretty simple. If you're on a conforming lot, we don't have a problem with it. You meet the setbacks, you, you know, you meet all the requirements of zoning today. It's the ones that are on nonconforming lots, in the very dense neighborhoods of our, of our city, the ones where we have very, very serious parking problems and other problems to boot, density and things like that. So yes, we have an opportunity to do something for that, for that group that's in the nonconforming lot. If you're in a conforming lot, and it's a side by side, I'm surprised, because I don't know how that house, how, you know, in our neighborhoods, I don't see too many conforming uses next to nonconforming uses in these dense neighborhoods, rather, because there's minimum requirements to setback and frontage in that. So most of them are probably in the nonconforming use area. And so I don't think we're picking on or trying to, you know, put people against other, put a house against a house. We have an opportunity now to make some changes in these neighborhoods, to make sure there's parking, to make sure there are some other restrictions we can put on there, to protect our neighborhoods. I mean, that's what I'm looking at, protection of our neighborhoods. I mean, look at our neighborhoods today, they're very, as Counselor Boishman, they're very dense, overpopulated, short of parking, and we can't do anything about that unless we use this type of, type of permit. So I see an opportunity for us to make changes for the... So I see an opportunity for us to make changes for the better for the neighborhoods. So they are less dense and there are more requirements on them. And I don't, I'm not afraid to do that to, to, to the homeowners. Because otherwise, we're going to continue to have the neighborhoods we have, dense, densely populated, parking problems, and then, then we see blight and decay. So I think there's an opportunity for us to try to make some changes in our housing stock, bring it up and, and prove it. That's my two cents.
Council Green.
I guess my question would be directed to Mr. Lanciahny about the number of permits. I, I mean, are you able to determine your office, the permits that are polled on these non-conforming homes versus the homes that would be on conforming lots that we never have an opportunity to put conditions on?
I believe with some research, we could find the number. I know that in the past couple of years, we have issued permits to buildings that have been vacant or not used for more than two years that are on conforming lots, that are conforming uses. Our zoning ordinance is...
Special permits?
Building permits.
Building permits?
Yes.
Not special permits?
No.
Okay.
If a house meets all the setbacks, it's allowed use in the zoning district, and someone is simply going to repair the property, we have issued those permits and we've not sent them to you. Our zoning ordinance is, is written, and I believe I'm correct, but I rely on our two city solicitors, is if it's non-conforming, it comes here. So that's why, and I, I heard that in the past I had done nothing. I, I believe that and I agree with that. Recently, the last two you got, I had gone to Anna and told her that I'm not getting the questionnaires from you on what should be done. It's a mix-up that someone in City Hall made. I'll take it, whatever, but in the last couple of them, I'm now getting the questionnaires on what should be presented to the city council and answering it. I, I don't know where we broke down the communication, but when a form of intent came to me and I said it had to go to city council, I didn't offer on that form of intent reasons, what you should do or anything else. But now I, you know, between the two of us, we reached out, we got it, and I'm trying, I didn't think you were, but it's, I'm just trying to explain, you know, there was a breakdown that we have corrected, I believe, and I'm now getting those and I'm trying to respond to them as the building department.
The city clerk can actually provide some further clarification as to the, the process, if you would, Madam Clerk.
For the past years before you were building commissioner, the prior building commissioner, and I had had conversations about that. And because I thought that he should be on the list, and he said, no, he doesn't need to be on the list. The applicant goes to him with a letter of intent, he issues a zoning determination, and if he felt he needed to make comment, he would come to the meeting. So that is why the building commissioner was never on the list. It wasn't really a mix-up. It was deliberate based on prior opinion. Should we have had a conversation? Probably. But we didn't, so it's been rectified.
We all make mistakes or we drop things. She had a very clear process from the previous. I didn't know it. And it went on a long time, but we started getting a lot of these and I started to hear, you know, I'm not telling you anything. So we reached out with the, you know, I'm now trying to respond.
I think that the lines of communication all across the city through all the boards and departments have gotten a lot better. I appreciate the fact that when the special permits would come before us, you know, the majority of the department heads would comment, you know, yea or nay, you know, for or against, and here are the reasons. Because I, I like to make informed decisions. In your opinion, the, this petition would affect those homes that you would not have a problem with letting them make use of the house if it was, you know, if it had all the setbacks and that they, it met all the requirements. You're comfortable with, with allowing those people to do that work under their form of intent and following all the laws through the building department?
If it's a single-family or two-family home and it's on a lot that is conforming, it meets all the setback requirements from the lot lines, it has at least a 10,000 square, or whatever minimum square footage in the zoning district it's in, we've not, I have not sent them to you since I've been here for six years. They've been issued, if they come in and they have a single-family house and they want to rehab it and it's, the plot plan says it's conforming, we've evaluated the application for a building permit and gone forward with them. There have been some. How many I don't know, but I know there have been some. And I haven't sent them to you because it wasn't a non-conforming. As I read on page 20, the vacant, abandoned buildings, it says non-conforming. So the non-conformity is what has triggered the requirement for a special permit.
A special permit is not a building permit. A special permit is a permit to use a structure that's, that's not otherwise permitted in a zoning district or to use a structure whose dimensional, dimensional criteria isn't consistent with the zoning ordinance, whether it's lot size, front yard setback, side yard setback, or rear setback, or the frontage issue. So they are, they are two distinct concepts. The issue is if there's a non-conforming lot and we, and it's been abandoned, which is one standard, or not used for two years, which is a separate and distinct standard, then it is, requires to get a special permit to be put back into use currently. So we can then say, okay, it's non-conforming, but we're going to agree to do this. And under our ordinance, it requires a finding that there is some architectural or other feature that makes this particular property redeeming. Otherwise, the rationale is that the building is otherwise abandoned and should be demolished. That's the concept. That's behind the statute and our zoning ordinance there. So when he says if the property is otherwise conforming, then that, that means it doesn't need a special permit from this body or from the zoning board as, as we've now recently amended. But they still may issue a building permit because the person may want to put on a new roof or rehab a kitchen or do something along those lines. And then the extent of that work will relate to exactly how much of the structure, if not the whole structure, again, gets brought up to the current building code, depending upon the amount of work that that person does. So we could have a situation if we exempt single-family homes and two-family homes from the special permit process where they do not comply with zoning, but someone could then move in and live in it because they don't need to go to the building department and then make an application for, for a building permit to make any rehabilitation of the property. So under that scenario, when we make this exception for the single-family, the two-family homes, we lose the opportunity to try to place those types of restrictions or conditions on the property if that's what we, if that's what it is that the body wants to do. So that's, that's the issue I think really before you is, do you want to just let the single-family homes that don't otherwise conform with zoning be occupied and used without any further review by a, by a zoning official? If you, if it would be you, which it won't be now, it will be the zoning board because the first part of this petition is now gone through. And if you don't, then that's, then you need to seriously look at the second part of the application.
So Bean, is this a specific question?
Yes, yes, to that, to his comments. So, Mr. Solicitor, you're saying that, let me just repeat again, for a non-conforming, a house that's, a, a, a single-family home on a non-conforming lot, if it hadn't been vacant for two years, let's say it's only been vacant for six months. Does that require a special permit?
You know, we can get into the weeds on the complex issue of...
Well, it's important, I think. That's important to know that.
There are two distinct standards in your zoning bylaw currently. There is a current opportunity for a building to be abandoned.
Right.
And that could be arrived at almost instantaneously depending upon circumstances. Somebody could literally board up their house, throw the keys at it, abandon it.
Yeah, bank foreclosure.
It happened right away. And the building commissioner could, if he does an evaluation of each, make that determination. The easier determination is to evaluate that the property hasn't been used for two years. That's a separate and distinct standard.
We had that, we had that issue on Prospect Street, I believe. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So if, if it's not been used for two years, then under either of those conditions, either of those situations, it's a special permit
Right.
to allow the continued use of a non-conforming structure because it's either non-conforming in its use or it's non-conforming in its dimension.
I just want to make it clear, the burden, you know, if we're putting a burden on, on property on this, the burden is a very small amount of people we're talking about. We're not talking about the person that, you know, has had the house vacant for, for six months or, you know, they've been trying to sell, it's been empty for that long. It's the properties that have been vacant for two years or more we're talking about. And I don't, I see this and I agree with you and I agree, this is a great opportunity for the zoning board of appeals to be able to make some changes, whether, you know, again, whether it be parking or other, other quality of life issues to those occupants that are buying that property and let it be known. I don't think this is a burden at all. I, I don't think it's a hardship at all for most people. This is what we're doing today. It's not going to affect 99% of the people in Pittsburgh. It's that 1% or 2% of houses that are just vacant, sitting in those neighborhoods for two years or more, that now, so, do we want someone to just come in there and just automatically live there? I don't. I think those houses should be, go through some type of process, a special permit process to allow that, relook at that, to make sure they, that we can make some changes to improve that neighborhood. That's what I'm saying. So I don't think it's an overwhelming amount of people we're, we're, we're making it hardship for. It's just 1% of properties that have now been vacant for two years, two years or more, that we have an opportunity to, to put a hand on.
And that group is even smaller because it's only for those properties that don't conform with conforming.
Non-conforming uses, right.
Someone could walk into a single-family home that's fully compliant with all the zoning dimension requirements and use requirements, and they could occupy that house without going to apply for a building permit as long as they're not going to do any construction.
Right. This is my last comment. And it's fair to say, the houses we're talking about are in a densely populated neighborhoods where we currently have problems now, today, we have, now have an opportunity to do something about them. That's it.
Council Green.
Right. I guess my question would be to Mr. Lanciahny is, you know, are, are we keeping ourselves protected enough under this ordinance or...
I believe if they go to a board for a special permit, you are.
Okay. Thank you.
Council Dean Natale.
Might I understand that House A has been abandoned for more than two years. House B and C have not, but they're non-conforming as well. House A, they have to go through the, the runaround on getting situated in House A. House B and C, right, but House B and C can be non-conforming for 50 years if the person lives there for 50 years and never leaves.
Remain in, in continuous use. So what happened is in 1945, they passed a statute that empowered municipalities to have zoning ordinances. And they knew at that time that not all the current structures that are there are going to comply with this new concept of zoning, this long, this overarching land use plan that they would install in different cities and towns throughout Massachusetts. And so they created this provision that we've got to weed out those properties that eventually don't comply, but we're not going to do that to a property owner and remove their opportunity to use their property because it doesn't comply with zoning. We're going to let life unfold and once they abandon the property or they don't use it for two years, then we're going to extinguish their right to do the use of it.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Thank you.
Council Joseph.
I, I guess I, I still have to go back to my neighborhood because this just bugs the shit out, bugs the heck out of me. Okay? I'm looking at, I'm looking at the two houses in, the one that's behind me on Harrison Ave, whose front steps are on the road. Okay? So obviously they are a non-conforming lot. And the house across the street from me, which is a two-family that's on a postage stamp. Okay? Both of them were abandoned for quite a period of time, but they mustn't have made the two years because neither one of them came to us for a special permit. Okay? House A, the two-family, has been taken over by a family that the parents are going to occupy the bottom floor and they're going to rent out the top floor. They have building permit right in the front window. Okay? And they, they put in a driveway where there wasn't a driveway. They've done everything that they needed to do because they want to make that their home. The people behind me on Harrison Ave, they had a cease and desist order on their front door because they were living there without power. Okay? So somebody obviously is enforcing the codes with the people that are doing things, even if it's not a non, even if it's not been abandoned for two years, somebody is still enforcing codes to say, you can't do that in this neighborhood until you have the proper building permits and you have power and all of that stuff. So two different houses. One, they're both non-conforming. Okay? They both were abandoned for at least a year and a half. Okay? One is being fixed properly and eventually somebody will move in there. And one is putting a coat of lipstick on it and making it look good because they're just rehabbing it and then they're going to flip it. Okay? So what makes them any different than the person that the house has been abandoned for two years? I really don't, this, it's not an overly congested neighborhood, but both of those lots are non-conforming. Okay? And I don't live in, I live in a congested neighborhood, but I don't live in an overly congested neighborhood. But both of those lots were non-conforming. Both of those houses were abandoned. One's going to be fixed correctly. One's going to get a coat of paint and be solved, so.
Council Donnelly.
I think that he wanted to make a...
Oh, I apologize. Do you have a response?
The one that got the cease and desist hired a licensed contractor. The contractor started doing the work. The contractor didn't like that the homeowner wanted him to do things that weren't to code. Came to the city and said, I'm not working there because the homeowner wants work done that doesn't meet code. I'm pulling, you know, I'm surrendering my permit. So a cease and desist was issued. Unfortunately, that owner has sworn, which they're allowed to do, that he is moving into that house. I, because they swear on the paperwork that they're moving into the house, state law allows them to continue the work as the homeowner, moving into it. Do I think you're right that he's going to flip it? I do. But I can't prove it because he came in and swore an affidavit and said that he has bought the house, he's rehabilitating it to move into. It was less than two years. Both of them were less than two years. The banks, I think, have come to attention because we're doing a lot of these that have been vacant more than two years. And the banks are looking at things that they have on their books for 18 months and saying, we better get rid of it before we have to have it go through this process. So they are not used. I mean, the bank is saying that, you know, they're paying the taxes on it. They're, they're not abandoning it and saying they don't want it. They, they've seen what we're doing and I think they've stepped up.
My point, my point, only point is, people are going to do the right thing if they're going to do the right thing. Not whether or not it's been abandoned for two years or if it's been abandoned for 18 months. People are going to do the right thing if they, if they, they're going to go through, some people are going to go through the zoning board of appeals and do all the wrong things, but they'll have their conditions to say, yeah, you got to do this. So it, really, I don't know how much we've protected ourselves for the sliver and how much we've prevented people from just fixing up a house.
Council Donnelly.
As the city solicitor said, you know, you gave, a couple of examples were given of what, what year. Most of the houses that are coming in for a special permit were built before 1945, when the zoning first came into Pittsburgh. I mean, there's houses that are coming in that are 100 years old. So I, I think it's an opportunity for whatever board or whatever group of people to look, is this in the best interest of the neighborhood? Is it in the best interest of the city? Now, you gave two great, Council Joseph gave two great examples of a plus for the neighborhood. But if you give two, and I would say the building inspector can probably give 52. And lots of them aren't good, they'd be good examples of why they should come in. Because there's a lot of, I don't know if there's more homeowners working on property that are going to be owner-occupied or just flippers. They're just coming in, they're going to do whatever they can, the fastest way they can, just flip it over. So that's why I say when people come in, you see the applicant. But really, that permit is through an applicant, but the beneficiary is the house itself, the building itself. But is it in the best interest of the neighbors and the neighborhood? Or is it just in the best interest that individual that has made the application? He's just going to get in and get out as fast as he or she can. So I think, I look at it as an opportunity for the building inspector, the electrical inspector, the plumbing inspector, for the city council or zoning board. But the neighbors have an opportunity to come in and say, this used to be a single family. There are two families, three families, four families that used to be single families that have never taken a permit out. It's an opportunity to bring it back to reality. And I think as Council Bean just said, we're not talking about, I mean, there's over 10,000 houses in the city of Pittsburgh. You're not talking about that many. houses in the city of Pittsburgh, you're not talking about that many. I look at it as opportunity, not really punitive.
Counsel Boishman.
Duffy, question. How do you find out if a house has been vacant?
We try to find out from Unitil, the water department, sewer department. Sometimes we're able to find out who owned it, and find out from them. It's, we reach out to different resources and try to determine how long a property's been vacant.
So let's go to Counsel Joseph over there.
Yeah.
And we're going to use 99 Wall Street.
Okay.
The pipes broke, and the people walked away. The power's still on, the water's still on, and it's been vacant for over a month, right? So those properties next to his house could have been vacant a lot longer than 18 months. You're going on the assumption that just because the power's not shut off, which I could keep the power off at a minimum of $25 a month, and say it's not vacant. Prime example was 122 Oak Hill Road, which we gave a permit. They never used it, but they kept the power on, and they kept the lights on, I mean, and the heat on. But they never once went in there. Because I live in that neighborhood, and I drove up and down the street every day, like Mr. Donnelly drives up and down Main Street. And I never saw anybody in there. And I'm not complaining, but I just want to know. Because I'm in favor of bringing every house that's been vacant in the city of Pittsburgh for two years in front of a board. Everybody in front of a board, so they can do the proper things. Because if they're going to change Pittsburgh, we have to change the neighborhoods. We have to do that. Because we're not going to change if we don't change our neighborhoods. You're not going to change the neighborhood. Bringing downtown back isn't going to change Pittsburgh. What's going to change Pittsburgh is the neighborhoods. And we have to change the neighborhoods. And that's the way I want it. Can I talk to Mark Osteen, Osteen? Can you, come up, please?
Yes, Counsel Boishman. I'd be happy to hear from Assistant City Solicitor.
Sorry. I did carry it away. I enjoy it.
Mr. Goldstein, good evening.
I brought it, well, I brought it to Vinnie Too, so in all fairness to Vinnie Too, I brought it to him a lot, and then I brought it to you a lot.
It's okay.
My question to you, as a whole, if this council as a whole says, every house that has been vacant for two years, or even 15 months, because basically, it's an abandoned property if it's been vacant that long, can the city of Pittsburgh, under our zoning laws, say, "You have to come in front of a board," so this board, whatever, whatever board it may be, that we send this to, can put requirements on them to say, "They have to do this, they have to do that." Whether it be conforming or non-conforming?
Well, you're asking my opinion. I don't know what a court of law would actually do, but my opinion is that you probably could pass an ordinance that says that. However, you will have more hearings for more vacant buildings or abandoned buildings. Remember now, it's abandoned buildings, as Attorney Pusitieri pointed out. What's abandoned? Abandoned is what you described. They shut the power off, or even if they had the power on, it's been abandoned. So you could, if it's non-conforming, you could act right away and be able to do that. So my opinion is, yes, this board could vote that. And you could have the ZBA meeting every night of the week on those types of buildings. Because, you know, if it's a conforming building, and someone went, and it has been abandoned for two years, but it's conforming to all zoning, they can just by right go in there and fix it up and do what they need to do. Just get a building permit if that's what they need to do. It's really the non-conforming, because that's the issue with the density in the neighborhoods. If it's become a two-family over time, because they had a variance, and now the density of the neighborhood is basically saying that it's really overwhelming. I mean, this board then has a chance, not this board, but the ZBA would have a then a chance to say, "Look, it's non-conforming, we want it to go back to single-family." And they would be able to do that. So, and I don't know if Attorney Pusitieri would differ with my opinion, because I'm not sure if a court has really ruled on that, but I think this board could do that, if that's what you wanted to do. You have to make sure that you meet, you're going to be able to meet your objective by passing an ordinance like that. Because it's going to be a very burdensome ordinance. Be tremendous amount of hearings for an ordinance like that.
Yep. But my question to you, sir, and I question to the board, is do you want to change to Pittsburgh? Or do we want to say, "Let it go this way"? Counsel Joseph, I see you shaking your head, I agree, but look at Counsel Green, you drive around your neighborhood. Counsel Beazley, Ward 5. Boishman, Ward 2. Caddy, Ward 3. Look at the neighborhoods. Look at the rundown sections. Look at them. Why don't they fix them up? I'll tell you why they don't fix them up. Because it's rundown, and they don't want to invest the money. They just don't want to invest the money. And why should I? So we put back, like Counsel Bean says, we put a guy in, we pass this thing here, saying, "A single-family, a two-family does not have to go in front of anybody, because even though it's non-conforming, because we say it's all right." And all of a sudden, I, as an investor, and I, as an investor, buy, like in Worcester, there was a guy that bought 200 homes, as an investor, because I'd buy them cheap. Put minimal requirements in, and just put it in there with anybody. There's no rules, no regulation. Go in there with a paintbrush and paint, because paint looks really pretty when it's there, but the wood's still rotted behind it. And doesn't care, because all he cares about is flipping it. Flipping it and making a dime. And that's all he cares. We should try to start this, and try to bring pride back into our neighborhoods. If we do this, you'll see a different city, and I'll tell you, your Main Street will start booming. But if we leave everything the same, your Main Street's going to stay the same. It's not going to change. You can make it one lane, you can put 10 bicycle paths in there, and it isn't going to change. So that's how I feel.
Counsel Cadd.
I'll just make this quick. I think with, with the NICE committee, I think, really helped out the council a lot, when, I think it was the Merrill Ave property. And I'm hoping, moving forward with a zoning board, that the NICE committee still sends information forward to the zoning board. You know, the taxes paid, you know, things, the fire chief is on the committee, the police chief. I think that helped this council immensely with our last two petitions. I think we did a good job with them. So I'm just hoping, even though we just passed the buck to the zoning board, the NICE committee still gets involved with them, and gives them the information they need. Because I can see where they're going to be in the same position we were three hearings ago, when we didn't know what was going on. And finally, the communications in City Hall opened up. And I think that's so valuable, whether it's us listening to these special petitions, special permits of the zoning board. I think they're still going to need the NICE committee's input to do the right thing.
Counsel Beazley.
Is that brief enough?
Brief enough. Thank you, Counsel Cadd.
Thank you. Counsel, there are two city solicitors. So, we heard an awful lot. And when I'm looking at this, it says, "This section shall not apply to the reuse of a lawfully existing, non-conforming, single, or two-family structure, where the principal use is permitted by right in the district." So what exactly does that mean? Because when I'm looking at it and saying, "Lawfully existing, non-conforming," it's kind of like you're saying, "It's lawfully there, but it's non-conforming." So when you're reading that, what exactly does that mean?
That means, at the time the zoning ordinance was passed or amended, the structure as it was, was at that moment, was then lawful. After the, after the passing of the ordinance, it was no longer conforming with the ordinance. So it was lawfully existing at the time the ordinance was passed, but it no longer conforms to zoning.
Okay. So when we're talking about units that are conforming, that there's no problem with them, they're conforming, but they've been vacant for two years. Presently, those buildings or structures, people can just move in, correct?
If they're conforming.
Yes. If they're conforming. Okay. Nobody, nobody can stop them from doing that, it's...
It depends, because there's, it's, the standard then is, was it abandoned?
Right.
We have two completely different standards. We have a standard that says, "The property was abandoned." Abandonment can happen in a moment. It's abandoned.
Or it could be not used for two years. And there was a case on this, we, the three of us, were looking at this together. And it is very, it's a very difficult way. The statute's not written very clearly, the ordinance follows the statute, and it looks like abandoned or not used for two years, meaning it has to be abandoned for two years, or it has to not be used for two years. But those are two separate, distinct standards. So to his, to Counsel Boishman's question, could we shrink the timeframe down from two years? Yes, if the building department had enough tools at its, in its toolbox, to make an assessment as to whether or not a property is in fact abandoned. Because many of these properties have been abandoned, but how do you prove that? How do you establish that, when all you have is the ability to collect perhaps a few records, make a quick assessment on an application, then go on to the next thing, or the things that are piling up on your desk? So, to a certain degree, you can make that as short as you want to, if you can find that it's abandoned.
So I guess my last question to you, because you know more about law than I do. So if it's a con...
Not sure about that.
Okay. If it's a conforming building, right?
Yep.
And I go to Supreme Court, or wherever I need to go, and say, "I want to move into this conform, it's conforming, there's no reason why, the only thing that's preventing me, the city of Pittsburgh does not want me to live in Pittsburgh." Would you see us winning that case?
No, because the statute says, the statute is limiting. The statute says, "A zoning ordinance or bylaw may define," that's the permissive that gives us the green light to make an ordinance, "or regulate non-conforming uses of structures abandoned or not used for a period of two years." Okay? So if it's otherwise conforming, we're not going to be able to make an ordinance that prevents people from using the property.
Right.
From a zoning perspective. Right. Correct. I would agree with that opinion.
So basically, if it's conforming there, nobody's going to, should even bother with those?
If they're conforming, nobody's going to see them, and unless they want to pick up a hammer, or start working with a screwdriver, they're not even going to walk into the building department. And even if they are, they may not.
They may. If it's vacant for more than two years, Unitil will not restore gas or electric until the homeowner has hired an electrician and a plumber or pipe fitter to go into the building, verify that the wiring and plumbing is safe, and then the wiring and plumbing inspectors do an inspection to verify that the building is safe in those two standards only, and then Unitil will turn on the power and the gas, and, until they come and request a building permit, they're in their property.
Thank you.
Counsel Bean.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're next.
Counsel Duffy, you brought up a good point on the banks. It was something I hadn't even thought about, but reminded me about, and Counsel Donnelly remember this, out in the 1990s, when the savings bank and loan collapsed, we had many houses here in the city of Pittsburgh that were way over-financed. And what happened was, the banks would foreclose on the mortgage, and then buy, they'd have an auction, and buy it back. They were just playing along with us. And those buildings kept saying vacant. So today, with this, with this ruling, or if we make the change, we now have a tool to use, to force some of these banks now to get rid of the property. Counsel Boishman called me three weeks ago, and had me meet with the mayor. Property up on, up in Federal Rockland Street area there, in a radius of one mile, I bet you were...
1.8.
1.8. There had been three or four properties owned by banks, that were, you know, that were, you know, abandoned, or whatever. But those banks probably don't realize that if they go two years, that property's going to lose a lot of value. So I see this as another major tool to help keep our neighborhoods clean and safe, and to get some traction with the banks. Because, I don't know if we have a record of it, but years ago, we did an assessment of all these bank-owned buildings in the city, and there was a lot of them. I'm sure it's the same way today. If you look at a lot of those nuisance buildings we looked at, Mr. Mayor, a lot of those are owned by the banks. And they control that. And if they know they're going to lose that right, and lose that value, they'll turn those buildings over quicker than not, I think. Just another tool, and I think we need as many tools in the toolbox as we can, to be able to get the density out of these neighborhoods, get our neighborhood safe, and more of a viable place to live.
Yes, I agree with Counsel Bean, in the assessment that I, you know, my opinion is that the two-year non-conforming should include everything. For a single-family, multifamilies, but on the NICE committee, and Liz can talk more about it, we actually have a list of 300 or 400 properties that have been foreclosed on by the banks, and it's, majority of them are mortgage companies outside of Pittsburgh and outside of Massachusetts.
Right. They're not, they're not local banks, or banks all across the country.
And I have to tell you, they could kill us.
Yep.
Okay? They could kill, and that's where the big issue is, I think, is that you have these mortgage companies, secondary markets that are being sold, bundled up, and sold again, and sold again, and sold again. And that is not only just for Pittsburgh, but for, across the Route 2 corridor on some of the urban centers. And that's the biggest problem, is that these places, these mortgage companies just don't care. And then the whole issue is, when is a property, if it's foreclosed on, it may not be abandoned. People still may be living there. So that's another whole issue. But I think these are all great issues. The NICE committee has been very, very involved, and, you know, we make a lot of progress. You go three steps forward, and sometimes five steps back, but we are making progress on some of these.
But you agree, it's a great tool to have for the banks.
I totally agree.
There's nothing else you can do. These banks are in...
Totally agree.
...an osh gosh, wherever they are, but they're not local banks. The secondary market, we get sold, and these folks, you're right, they could care less about it. Unless we go directly to their board of directors and that, which embarrasses them, but maybe we should, with all these outside banks.
I don't think that's a bad idea.
We did that back in the 80s, and I don't see why we're doing it again. But that's one of the biggest problems, you're right.
Right. It's not the very small percentage of local banks that are doing that.
They'll work with you. Excuse me, Mr. President, I didn't mean to...
If I could add to that, Mr. President? Yes? But the foreclosure process was completely stalled for a period of years, and I think we finally have gotten through that, because the Attorney General put the kibosh on the various assignments, and it wasn't clear, and they created a whole new set of regulations, and through Land Court.
Yes.
So now, we finally got through that, so we should be seeing more activity to clean out those foreclosures that have stalled. And then the only other point is, it's a great tool, but if the property is otherwise conforming with zoning, then there is no loss of grandfathered rights.
No, no, I agree. You know, the HE has implemented, but we still have, it's a slew, a slew of vacant properties, or foreclosure, or what we call zombie mortgages. That's what we call them.
Counsel Joseph.
One thing I found in investigating houses in my ward was that they didn't accept the foreclosure from the people that left, so they were still the person on record for that house, so the house wasn't in foreclosure. So it really wasn't abandoned, and that's why we had properties that didn't have their lawns mowed and all this stuff, because the bank technically didn't take over responsibility for them for six to eight months after somebody left. And then, then they were in foreclosure, and then you could get somebody to actually mow the lawn. But I guess my question is, I mean, we have, we're talking about maybe three houses that we've done this year. And if we follow Counsel Donnelly's thing, there's about 10,000 houses in Pittsburgh. How many houses in Pittsburgh are non, on non-conforming lots? What percentage of houses in Pittsburgh would you say are on non-conforming lots?
I don't know how to answer that. I'd have to talk to...
Thinking for two years.
Percentage?
I could only guess.
40%?
If it was built before '47, it's probably non-conforming.
Oh, and I think we've built some after 1947 that are non-conforming.
We've built some after that that are now too, because the zoning has changed.
Okay. So if we're, if we're talking about three houses in a year, okay? Three thousandths of a percent of the houses. How well, if I went, if I was to be denied being the use of upgrading that house, what chances do we have in court of saying, "Somebody goes in and says, 'This person was, this house was abandoned for one year and nine months, and they didn't do anything about it.'" This house, my house that I'm trying to fix up, was abandoned for two years and one day. Would that still, would we still be able to defend our ruling that you have to do this if you have a house that's been abandoned for two years?
Yes.
By what, if it's, if it's that small a majority, how would we be able to defend that?
Because the court looks at certain dates, certain time elements. So you have, and that's what they go by. So if you can show, I mean, clearly, if it's one day over the two years, they may, but if it's been abandoned for two years and three months or two months, I think the court's going to side for the, with the city on that. Unless they can prove it's arbitrary and capricious, I, I think the court will side.
I just, I just personally think the whole thing is arbitrary and capricious.
I understand that. Yeah. And, and that's fine. But I think that if the ordinance makes sense and gives, and the ruling, the decision by the ZBA is, it makes sense, then I, I think the court will, I mean, finding arbitrary and capricious is pretty high standard. You'd have to be able to say that the ZBA closed their eyes to it and didn't really think through it. I, I think it's a wonderful case.
Counselor Green.
Do we have enough manpower, as our departments currently stand, to hear all these, if, if all of the houses now have to come before us? Do we have enough manpower to, to take care of that?
If they're going to be going before the zoning board of appeals, you'd have to ask the zoning board of appeals whether they have enough manpower to do it.
Well, that, because-
The, the building department would rule that it's vacant for more than two years or abandoned, and as Solicitor Pusiteri said, abandoned can be instantaneous. With the one on Myrtle Ave, the lawyers that were defending Mr. Lemay gave us some information, which the three of us then researched, and when Mr. Maxfield, the previous owner, said, I'm walking away, that's an abandonment, that's instantaneous, done. It's abandoned. It doesn't have to be abandoned for two years, it has to be abandoned. If the owner says, I quit, I'm walking away, that's an abandonment. That would have to go before the zoning board of appeals. If it's not used for two years, that's the other test that would have to be met, and then that would have to go to the zoning board of appeals. And he cringed at me, so I'm not sure that-
No, no, no. I mean, you're, you're correct, but, but what's, what's the distinction between abandonment and not used? I mean, I don't know if the law is that totally clear on it either, you know?
I just worry that if we get, you know, where we want all these properties to have these guidelines in place, that, I mean, it's great in theory, but what is that going to do for your department? What is that going to do for a, you know, are the zoning board meetings now going to be 10 hours long? Are they going to be having to meet, you know what I mean, five times during the month versus once a month? And how quickly can we get the, get this process done if we're, if we truly are doing it the right way? I, I want everything in place before we decide that, yeah, now everybody's going to have to have a board or a hearing or a ruling on it. I don't want homeowners or potential people investing in our city to have to wait six or seven months to have a ruling.
They can't wait six or seven months. There are time requirements to have decisions on special permits set out in the statute. I think it's 65 days from filing or from hearing, the decision has to be filed.
Yes, I think if they have to have a hearing within 90 days, and then 65 days, you have to have a ruling, I believe.
Are, are we, are we meeting that now?
I would defer to a previous member of the zoning board of appeals to be able to tell us that.
Well, the mayor's office is very interested in appointing something that's called a zoning administrator. I think it's something that, that we started talking about in the building department. A zoning administrator is a person that can be appointed by the zoning board, that the zoning board can delegate a portion of its authority to. Whether or not it's going to be a volunteer position or a funded position is obviously a challenge. So right now, we're looking at, mayor's office is looking at trying to find a, a citizen that is energetic, good to work with the public, but also have the ability to enforce certain conditions on the zoning board, maybe evaluate whether or not certain, certain types of applications can be decided by that zoning administrator. It's going to be also something that the zoning board's going to have to get on board with, because they're going to have to have a four-person vote, a four out of five, to delegate that type of authority. And it's nothing that we're familiar with from any other community, but it is a provision, it's been in the statute, I've been looking at it for, for years right now. I pointed it out to Mayor Dean Italian, and he's certainly interested in trying to leverage that, that for the city. It's something we're going to continue to look at, though. If you know anybody that wants to volunteer.
Will I get to write tickets? I mean, all I want is a ticket.
You know what? You've been asking for a ticket book.
Right.
Careful what you wish for.
Really, right. Thank you.
Counselor Dean Italian.
I know some want to move forward with this question, but let's get back to what the issue is. You know, we talk about these items, and then they snowball into Armageddon. One particular counselor makes it sound like that we, well, I know he would prefer to have a secret police force that goes to every house in the city and burns it down. That doesn't conform. All right? What, what kills me about these matters is, we talk about this, and then we have some counselors who talk about how the city is no good because of some of these neighborhoods. I have relatives who live in very, live in areas of question that one of the counselors raised. They're law-abiding people, they live on a conforming lot, but there are lots around them that are non-conforming. There, we had a lady come before us several weeks ago when the Lemay property came before us, pleading with us to renovate the building. Okay? Because she, like the neighbors around there, did not want to see the alternative. So for anybody to, you know, I love how, okay, it's with the ZBA now, so all our problems are going to be solved. All right? The ZBA is capable of making, making wrong decisions. And quite frankly, to insinuate that, oh, well, if it's not conforming, then we got to really sink our teeth into them. You know, the problem with the city of Pittsburgh is not because of one or two bad hotspots in the city. Okay? The problem with the city of Pittsburgh is, we have too much housing. Okay? But what we're doing right now is, we're trying to put it on a regulatory board to make these decisions and not us. And I think all properties should not be exempt, they should all be on the same, same level, no matter one, two, three, or four. But I get really, really, I cringe when I hear people say, well, if we take care of these areas, it'll vastly improve the city. Okay? I got news for you. If we take care of all those problem hotspots, Main Street might be the same way it is, because that's not the problem. All right? And, you know, some here talk about what we need to do, but no one talks about the money. And I love talking about money. Someone asked earlier, do we have the resources? Of course we don't have the resources. We'll never have the resources. Okay? But let's not sell the people of Pittsburgh a fallacy that this is going to cure all our ills. It won't. All right? We got problems well beyond that. And I think some here would love to target areas and send secret police after them. Okay? The ZBA is going to take care of it, great. But I want everybody to understand, the ZBA is not infallible. They're human beings too. They make mistakes as well. All right? So I, I just get nervous, because you know who the worst landlord in this city is? Us. Okay?